Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Candidates Forum sponsored by the O'Fallon Shiloh Chamber of Commerce, the O'Fallon Progress, and the O'Fallon Weekly. I'm Dr. Ann Collins, Associate Professor of Political Science at McIndry University, and I will be the moderator for tonight's forum. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The purpose of tonight's Candidates Forum is to provide a platform for O'Fallon citizens to gain the information necessary to make an educated decision on school District 90 and 203 school board candidates when voting in the April election. We will go through each district individually. We welcome the guests who are here with us tonight and the many viewers who are joining us live via Charter Cable, Channel 993, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. This forum will be rebroadcast between now and the election. The forums can also be accessed through the city's website. Tonight's forum will proceed under the following rules. Each candidate will be given three to five minutes to make a short presentation. There will be no questions asked of the candidates. Tonight is more of a meet and greet. The forum will conclude with a meet and greet with those in attendance. Of both candidates and guests, we must require that a courtroom atmosphere be maintained during the forum. Raucous applause, chants, whistles, and such will not be tolerated. Proper conduct will be set at the discretion of the moderator. If a candidate is interrupted by inappropriate behavior, we may decide to stop the time clock and restart it when the candidate resumes speaking. Please silence your cellphones at this time. Please note that emergency exits are through the main doors and the side doors in the back. A table for campaign literature has been established outside in the foyer. Distribution of campaign literature is limited to tonight's candidates only. There is biographical information on our candidates available as well. Candidates are invited to remain available following the forum to meet with citizens who may have specific questions or comments. Before proceeding with our forum, I would like to thank and present to you the sponsors of this event. Nick Miller, editor of the O'Fallon Weekly. Kurt Libra, editor, O'Fallon Progress. And the O'Fallon Shiloh Chamber of Commerce. I wish to introduce to you our timekeeper for this evening, Jessica Lottz. She is Executive Director of the O'Fallon Shiloh Chamber of Commerce. Candidates, please note that time the card is displayed by our timekeeper to structure your remarks within the timeframes. You also have timeframes marked on your name tag for you to see, the back of your name tag. We will now begin with our forum presentations. We will start with O'Fallon District 90 candidates. There are four open positions and eight candidates. The candidates are Jason Boone, Quinetta Chambers, Kurt Effer, Matthew Lloyd, incumbent, John Rosenbaum, Steve Springer, incumbent, John Valentine, John Wagnon, incumbent. Mr. Rosenbaum was unable to attend tonight's forum. We will now offer District 90 candidates three to five minutes to make candidate statements. The order in which the candidates will present was determined earlier by a random draw. Mr. Boone, you're first. You have three to five minutes.
Thank you all for coming. It's always great to come out to a forum and have so many friendly faces that are here, or at least mostly friendly faces. So I certainly look forward to questions and getting to talk to everybody that's here afterwards. But I wanted to start, just to make sure everybody is familiar with who I am. My name is Jason Boone. I've considered myself a mostly lifelong resident of O'Fallon. I moved here in fifth grade, attended Shiloh School, Marie Schaefer School, and moved to O'Fallon, and graduated from O'Fallon High School before going to the University of Illinois. I lived a couple of places around the country before choosing to move back in 2001. We had a child over in St. Louis, and we really knew that we wanted to be in the best possible school district to raise our kids. So in 2001, we did move back to O'Fallon and have lived here ever since. And I raised two boys here in O'Fallon. Nick is seventeen, a junior at the high school. Drew is thirteen and an eighth grader at Caryell, so finishing up at District 90. Both of them have gone through Evans and then Caryell for their time, and we've really had an amazing experience with those schools. I'm about as big of a fan as Laverne Evans and the open concept that you could possibly meet. So anybody has questions about Evans, I'm always happy to talk about that. In addition to being a parent, I've also had the opportunity to be very involved with the schools and the school programs. So while at Evans, I was in the PTO, the Parent Advisory Board, which is really a great program that we had at Evans. And then when we were at Caryell, a member of the District 90 Boosters, which is an organization started briefly after a referendum failure where the district was going to have to look at options to fund extracurricular activities differently, and the boosters stepped up to do so. Really a great opportunity for me to start learning about school financing, some of the challenges that the district faced, and how we could assist with those through the community. In addition to those, I'm very involved with Rotary here in O'Fallon. O'Fallon Sunrise Rotary is my home club. I've been involved in many different levels of that, working with the youth that come in for exchange, as well as a youth leadership program called Ryla that we run here in Southern Illinois, and currently working as a membership chair for the district. Rotary really has become a passion for me and an area for I can continue to give back the service through O'Fallon. Many of you will know that when I talk about why I care about the schools and why I want to serve, it's the service mentality that I saw from so many people growing up, the scout leaders, gentlemen like Butch Hunley and Gene Tuveno, that were leading my scout troop when I was here, that taught me about the importance of service and giving back to the community. Professionally, I'm a talent acquisition principal, which is a really fancy term for recruiter for IT guys, for SAIC, or Global Defense Contractor, and really gives me a great opportunity to talk to some really interesting people that are providing amazing technology support for our government and ensuring, most importantly, that our troops are provided with the information and resources to make sure they're safe as they are around the world. So I'm often asked, why are you running for school board? You know, you get a lot of criticism, a lot of questions, no compensation, spend a lot of time, and I touched on that. A lot of people when I was growing up in the area inspired me to a life of service. Rotary has been one path for that. But I look at the school board as a next continued path for that service to my community. I want to make sure that the children that are there currently, the students that are going to come behind my students, are given the same opportunities, the same inspiring teachers, the same challenging curriculum that I had, so that they can continue to go on, do great things, and come back and serve O'Fallon ideally, or the communities they choose to live in. Also, it's really important for me to see that the changes that the community wants to see happen within those school districts. We certainly have great things that are happening, but changes we need to make, and by serving on the school board, I feel I can help drive those changes. So that kind of allows me to address some of the major issues that are important for me. I haven't been shy at all to let everyone know that my number-one goal is elementary consolidation. I really like to focus on that. Elementary consolidation, I think, is the path that I'd like to see us go initially. I hear a lot of talk about total consolidation. I've really respected the best committee and the work that they've done to determine that that may not be the best path for our community initially, to merge the feeder schools and OTHS. So I'd really like to see us work together with Central 104, Shiloh District 85 ideally, and then District 90 to merge all of those districts into one. Both financial opportunities and savings we have there, as well as just standardizing the curriculum to the feeder schools to 203. Also, I'd like to see us expand and grow the curriculum opportunities, ideally bring back the advanced placement, advanced academically talented programs we used to have in the district, grow the differentiated curriculums that we have in the elementary schools, and then also seek to ensure that the district will responsibly use the tax revenues that are hopefully coming to the district after a passage of the countywide school facility sales tax that's on the same ballot election here that we'll have at the school board election. So those are the major goals, the consolidation, the responsible use of those funds, and then providing enhanced opportunities for our students. So thank you very much for your time, and look forward to hearing from everybody else.
Thank you. Ms. Chambers, you're next. Three to five minutes.
Okay. I would like to thank everyone for coming this evening, as well as the people that might be watching on TV taking the time to learn about the candidates. As introduced, my name is Quinetta Chambers. My husband and I have two children. We have been residents of O'Fallon for a little over ten years. My son and daughter, Morgan and Mason, which are out there, I are both attend Marie Schaefer School. My son's in preschool and my daughter's in fourth grade. To give you a little bit about my professional background, I have a bachelor's and master's degree in speech pathology from Illinois State University. I also hold a master's degree in educational administration from Lindenwood University. I am currently the Assistant Director of Special Education with Cahokia School District. Prior to entering the field of education, I was the lead speech-language pathologist on a Level One trauma team at a hospital in the Chicagoland area, and I've also held adjunct teaching positions at both St. Louis University as well as Lindenwood University. As I stated, or I mentioned Chicago, that's where I'm originally from. When my husband and I were looking for where we were going to make our home, we decided O'Fallon because we wanted a safe and vibrant community with an excellent school system. I am running simply because I'm a mother, and there's nothing more important to me than my children. I feel my role as a parent is to raise successful, independent adults. A necessary component of that is a quality education, and basically they're the motivation for my candidacy. I am committed to preserving the quality of their education, and I feel that I possess a unique set of skills to do that. In addition to my administrative skills, you know, I also have the skills of working outside of the field of education. So I feel it gives me a well-rounded perspective in addressing some of the difficult business decisions that districts have to make. The face of education is changing. There's new standards, there's new mandates, and unfortunately, there's a reduction in funding, which seems to be going to be around with us for a while. My current position allows me to participate daily in activities that mirror the decisions that the board will have to make. I understand the effects that board decisions will have on the classroom. And as I stated before, in addition to being an administrator, I'm a mom. I don't want to see the quality of my children's academic program decrease. I don't want to see my taxes either substantially raised because that impacts my personal finances and limits the types of things I can expose my children to, which to me is equally as important as their education. If elected to the school board, I feel I bring a wealth of knowledge and expertise in regards to educational practices, and will use that knowledge and expertise to ensure fiscal responsibility without diminishing the academic program. My priorities are simple: maintain the rigor and quality of education without increasing the burden on taxpayers. I'm committed to exploring options that are fiscally responsible, as well as to ensure that the board is making fiscally responsible decisions. Voting for me means voting for a mother who is not only committed to maintaining the quality of District 90's education, but a candidate who is also uniquely equipped with the skills and experience to hit the ground running. So, that's Quinetta Chambers.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to go over to Mr. Valentine now.
Good evening, and thank you for all coming this evening. As stated, I'm John Valentine, and I appreciate everybody's time here and watching online and things of that nature. I want to, before I introduce myself, I want to throw a shout out to all of the volunteers that we had over the last twelve months or so that were involved in the boundary redistricting efforts. There was an immense amount of hours and effort put forth by a lot of people to help the board and the incumbents that sit up here today come to a decision on what to do best for the schools going forward. And I wanted to make sure that they were thanked, both in the meetings and all the time that they put in for helping us out. So my name is John Valentine. I would consider myself a professional resident of the area in that I moved here when I joined the Air Force about twenty-some years ago. I have been here ever since. I met my wife in the Air Force, and we have lived in O'Fallon our entire time. I have two kids, one in seventh grade at Fulton, and a daughter, there was a son and a daughter then, at Marie Schaefer in third grade. So I've been a lifelong District 90 person as well. And I guess, in short, I'm here because I'm a father, almost like Quinetta, but it's kind of part of my theme here. I come from a background of science, math, and technology. I work in the IT business and have for my entire professional career, Air Force and having gotten out. I have a bachelor's in science, master's, and my wife has a PhD in biomolecular science. So in our house, math and science are not dull topics. They're rather frequented. Volunteering in the schools to help convey that type of information and trying to assist the teachers as time and schedules permit in those types of efforts. My job tends to keep me on the road in a very sporadic fashion at times, so I don't have the breadth of the Rotaries and some of the other volunteerisms here, but I am able to carve out schedules to make sure I don't miss kids' events, kids' activities. I participate with them in the swim teams, the band, which is a huge program in our house, and things of that nature. So I try to balance the work and the effort, along with the predictability of certain programs and packages like this. So I look forward to the idea of being able to serve on the board where I have a predictable schedule and I can control my ability to participate and maintain a presence and activism. I guess, as far as pieces go, I am a very STEM or STEAM oriented, for those that have maybe not have heard the term, adding science, technology, engineering, and math with a little bit of arts and the things that we've kind of lost track of in the early years in our district. Those types of things have taken a backside over the number of years, and we're just seeing them reintroduced at the middle school level. We've seen a science Olympiad team that competed for the first time out of Fulton Junior High last weekend in the regionals. We've seen some robotic teams that have been brought forth, but they're after-school activities. And I would argue that I would like to find a way to take those types of opportunities, those types of hands-on and applicable math and science and those things, and bring them back into the classroom to augment the curriculum and the academics that are in there today. I think our teachers are somewhat challenged based on class sizes and the amount of work that they are trying to incorporate in translating and bringing forth the common core, but I do believe, and I am very impressed in looking at like the numbers, the dollars that get spent per pupil in our district pale in comparison to some of the statistics throughout the rest of the state, yet we have some of the best teachers and best kids and best education system in the area today. And if we can find some new methods of resources to add to that, the sky's the limit. You know, being able to bring things like STEM or languages or further arts back into the district would be a fantastic add-on to where we sit today. I think another aspect that I would like to work with is the collaboration of the city and a lot of the things that are happening here, the downtown efforts. We'll have a new mayor, we'll have some new leadership, and we'll have lots of other opportunities to work with other folks with regards to resources and revenues, more volunteerism, getting the word out, making sure that we are publicly accessible across the board here, no pun intended, to bring forth images, ideas, and other things, because we're not going to have all the answers, but there's a lot of parents with a lot of great ideas and making sure that we can convey those and bring them forward and articulate them and make some of the best decisions for our kids going forward. So, there you have it. I'm done. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd, you're next. You have three to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Matt Lloyd. I'm a twenty-five-year retired Air Force veteran. Our last assignment was at Scott, and we retired here in, well, we retired in 2014. We moved here in 2011. We picked O'Fallon specifically because of the great schools. My daughters and my son have gone to school here. My oldest is a freshman in college, but she went to eighth grade in Caryell. My middle daughter, Caitlin, has completed all three years at Caryell. Now she's a junior at the high school. And my son's an eighth grader. He started in fourth grade at Moy. So we have a deep attachment to the District 90 schools. That deep attachment really stems from the debt I feel I owe to the district, to the community, for the great gifts that have been bestowed upon my children, the great success that they've had both inside school and outside school and continue to have. I know my daughter would not be succeeding the way she is at college without the background she had, and I just sort of feel a debt, not sort of, I absolutely feel a debt to pay that back, and this is a great opportunity for me to do so. As I said, I was in the Air Force for twenty-five years, so serving is inculcated into my values. And as I moved around, you know, when you're in the military, you're serving at a broad level, but I've always wanted to be involved at a local community level. That's what I, it's so exciting to see all these people here, to know what's being streamed, whether it was the boundaries or the budget for the other district, you know, the passion which with this town brings to the issues, to their interest in the school, is just wonderful. And at this most basic level of government, it's so exciting to be a part of, and this is what makes our country truly special. And being able to serve in it is just a great privilege, and I really wish to continue to do that. In our short time here since 2011, I've been pretty involved around the town. I've been involved volunteering at Moy, volunteering at Caryell. I've coached in the Parks and Recs. I've coached at the Kicks Soccer. Been involved with the O'Fallon Breaker Swim Team, the Yosi at the Y Swim Team. I'm an Assistant Scout Master and Troop Committee with Troop Forty-Six and the Scouts. And again, the school board will allow me another way to give back directly and immediately and help my community. The, you know, what I really would hope to accomplish or help the board accomplish as a team is maintain the fiscal discipline that we've shown ever since, you know, when we moved here, we walked right into the fiscal crisis with the referendum failing and all that. And since then, the board, which I just recently joined, has shown great fiscal discipline, and I really believe in that, that we need to live within our means. We do, nobody wants to raise their taxes, but they do want to have the best educational environment for their kids, which has means making difficult choices, weighing options, using a systematic approach to make sure we're getting the most bang for our bucks. And I want to continue doing that. I want to continue working with the other board members who've shown that great discipline and keep on that path. I also, you know, we talked about the boundaries a little bit. The lesson I took out of that is we handled that process fairly well. I loved how open and transparent. I want to maintain that. I think the openness and the transparency is so key. People will have much more faith and much more support of whatever solution you reach if they know it was reached out there openly. But I also think that we need somebody to establish a vision for where this district's going to go, that the superintendent acted properly, is trying to solve an immediate problem. The committee acted perfectly, trying to develop a solution that might last for three to five years. But somebody needs to be looking out ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, and I'm not sure anybody is doing that. And I think that's the purpose of the board, and I'd like to help work with the other board members to do that, whatever that solution may be. But it's more than just a particular school is overcrowding, it's why is it overcrowding? What are causing these issues? And then looking if, what are the causes, and then dealing with solutions that ultimately work at the root cause. And that's looking out into the future and seeing where is this district going and what are we going to do about it. You know, I really, and the last reason I want to run and serve is working with the families, working with the teachers, to really create the optimum environment for everyone to be able to do their best work, for the teachers to do their best work, for the students to be able to do their best work, so this district can succeed and O'Fallon can move forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to Mr. Wagnon.
All right. Hey, thanks, Dr. Collins. Thanks to everybody for being here, for hosting this. My name's John Wagnon, and I want to tell you a couple of things about myself. First, I'm a Christian, and my goal in life is to honor Jesus with everything I do, and I'm not perfect at it, but that's my goal. The second thing I want you to know is that I'm a husband, and my wife Kara and I are going to celebrate our wedding anniversary next Tuesday, so happy anniversary to her. And we've been married for nineteen years next Tuesday. It's crazy, nineteen years. The next thing is I'm a dad. I have three daughters, and then we are also a foster family. We're looking to adopt our little, our little two-year-old foster son, so hopefully one day that'll be a reality. So anyway, I want to let you know that about me. Those are kind of my priorities in life. But obviously, I'm here as a school board member and seeking reelection, and I want you to vote for Wagnon on April the fourth. We've lived here, my family and I have lived here in O'Fallon for about thirteen years, all told. I was in the Air Force for about nine years as a communications officer, and I moved all over the world. Our last base was here at Scott Air Force Base. We loved it here. We planted roots here. And I ran for this office four years ago because I wanted to get involved, and those are my kids sitting in those classrooms, just like everybody up here says, you know? And so I wanted to help out and do my part, and so that's why I ran for school board. As far as education goes, I've got a computer engineering bachelor's degree from the University of Arkansas, and I have a master's degree in computer networks from the Air Force Institute of Technology, so I've got the, kind of the computer techy background. I'd never held an elected position until I ran for school board, so now I'm this elected official, you know? It's a good time. I've really enjoyed these past four years. Two years ago, I was selected to be the board president for our school board, and it's been a great opportunity. And I wanted to share a couple of things with everyone as voters here tonight. And as voters, we have the privilege of selecting our leaders, and it's an honor here in America. And so we'll do that here locally on April the fourth. And sometimes when you go to the voting booth and you decide, especially on an incumbent, you may look at this guy and say, I do not want that guy to be my leader again. And sometimes you look and you say, hey, I really, we need to keep that guy around. And so I want to spend the rest of my time here tonight telling you why you need to keep me around, all right? So when I joined this school board, well, let me back up. One of the primary things that we talk about regarding school board is our finances, and we need to be responsible, we need to be fiscally prudent with our finances. And, you know, a lot of politicians complain about, hey, we don't get enough money, we need more revenue, we need more taxes and all that. I would not say that. What I would say is, we need to be responsible with the taxpayer money that we get. So if we get more taxpayer money, that's great. We need to spend that wisely. If we don't get any more money, then that's okay. We need to spend the money that we have wisely. To that point, I would just share one quick example. When I joined this board four years ago, I remember we, in board meetings, we would have to abolish what's called abolish the working cash fund. That's our savings account as a district. We would have to completely abolish it in order to move money around, to pay off other funds and all that stuff, which is not a good thing, you know? And so now, after four years on the board, and I won't take sole credit, but I'll take some credit, right? Now, we have over $1.1 million in our working cash fund, and that's not because we've received a ton of new revenue, that's because we've spent the money that we have wisely and responsibly. We have cut positions where positions need to be cut. We have added teachers and staff where those need to be added. You don't just need to cut, you need to have the right people in the right positions. We don't need to just hire someone because they've always been in that position. So I think our board and our staff have done a great job of hiring the right people. As far as tax rates go, we have the lowest tax rate right now, as far as District 90 goes, in the past three years, and I'm proud of that, and kudos to the rest of the board on that as well. Lower than just about any other kindergarten through eighth-grade district in this whole area. We brought back band and sports and art and music. We reduced athletic fees and registration fees. We've worked with local businesses to donate technology and other resources for our kids. Our standardized test scores have gone up. Our band placed in the top ten bands in the whole state. Our girls and boys have both won the state championship. I could go on and on about the great things that we've done. We renegotiated a multi-year contract with our teachers, our certified, non-certified staff, which, by the way, Steve Springer, sitting two people down from me, was one of our lead negotiators, did a great job with that. So I've worked with our board to do a lot of great things, worked with the staff, and I want us to continue that progress. Our tax rate is down, our performance is up, and I want you to go out there on April fourth and vote for John Wagnon. So thanks for the opportunity tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Springer, you're up. You have three to five minutes.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming out this evening, and thanks to everyone that is watching at home on the broadcast. You are all a very important part of the progress, of process of managing and maintaining the schools in O'Fallon, Illinois. I'd also like to quickly thank the O'Fallon Shiloh Chamber of Commerce, the O'Fallon Weekly, and the News Democrat for hosting us all here this evening. I am Steve Springer, is the name. My wife, daughter, and I have been residents in the O'Fallon area now for twenty-eight years. Our daughter graduated from OTHS. Our grandson did K through eight and in District 90, and is now a freshman at OTHS. And our youngest granddaughter will be taking Laverne evidence by storm here in about two years. I've served on the District 90 Board of Education now for eight years, and I'm running for my third term. I've seen the district go through several ups and downs over those eight years, and the last three or four have been really quite interesting, to say the least. The events of the day forced the Board of Education to defund sports, extracurriculars, activities, music, and arts a few years back, and our community really stepped up and filled the gap. The boosters took on the funding of our sports and some of the extracurriculars. The O'Fallon United Community Music School, that's a mouthful, folks began a band program to bridge our absence in the music programs. Those programs are now back under the umbrella of the district where they belong, and I'm happy to say I've always been an advocate for making that happen as soon as we're able to do so. Since first being elected to the Board of Education eight years ago, I have pushed over and over and over to ensure that expenditures never exceeded revenues, particularly in our education fund, a balanced budget requirement. Deficit spending was common and seemingly pretty acceptable eight years ago. We have accomplished that balanced budget goal in the last few years in spite of the fact that, three of the last four years, we've had roughly a $700,000 shortfall in state aid from the state of Illinois, and we're now dealing with the effects of three-quarters of a million-dollar withhold. and we're now dealing with the effects of a three-quarters of a million-dollar withhold from Senate Bill 107 for this year and possibly $775,000 next year. But we are paying our bills. We're maintaining our programs, and we're preparing to deal with whatever budget challenges the state may throw our way in the near future. We did not take the easy way out and use tax warrants or backdoor referendum to borrow money in working cash bonds to pay our daily operating expenditures and continue to deficit, deficit spend. I also pushed for leveling our bond payment schedule so that we would not be facing a pretty dramatic increase spike in our property taxes in a couple of years. We've accomplished that task as well, which precludes District 90 from desperately needing the revenue from another tax increase, the 1% school facilities tax. It would be grand to have an additional $1.8 million at our disposal. Taxic bodies can always find ways to spend your tax money, but we don't need it. The community doesn't, doesn't need another tax added to our present tax burden, especially in light of the Dearburgs 1% sales tax, the possible public safety 1% sales tax, and potential state tax increases that may be coming along our way. Our stakeholders are our students, our parents, our staff, and all of the residents of District 90. These groups are not always in perfect sync and agreement on priorities, especially funding priorities, and I'm quite aware of this. I will do my very best to represent the needs of all these groups. I have proven I got the tools and assets needed to continue serving in this very well-functioning Board of Education that we have in your service today. Community service is needed from our residents. It's my time to serve, and I'll do all that I can to maintain community values as we have here, to continue to improve this community in any way that I can. I ask for your vote for a third term of District 90. Please vote for Steve Springer, April 4th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Effort.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank the O'Fallon Child Chamber of Commerce, O'Fallon Weekly, and O'Fallon Progress for hosting tonight's event. City of O'Fallon for allowing us to use the wonderful facility tonight. Lastly, I'd like to thank the wonderful people that are here tonight and those that are viewing at home. I'm Kurt Effort, and I'm running for District 90 School Board. I have three beautiful daughters with my wonderful wife, 17 years, Michelle, who's in attendance. I've worked in electric trade in various positions over the course of my professional life. I am a former union member, but the last 10 years have been spent in management. With three girls attending District 90 at Marie Schaefer, fellow homeowner and taxpayer within the district, we share a vested interest in our school district. I, like the rest of you, want to see a financially responsible district providing a top-tier education. We certainly have obstacles to overcome. However, we have a community and staff willing to work for the future. I see a few positives and a few improvement opportunities for us in the coming years, and I'll start with our improvement opportunities tonight. First of all, finances. We will continue to be strapped with the burden of Springfield's poor fiscal decisions. Although District 90 has one of the lowest property tax assessments in the area, it's still higher than I would like to see. Essentially, we need to ensure we are operating as efficient and frugal as we can. I do support the 1% facility sales tax. It is an opportunity to capture a diversified revenue stream and provide for lower property tax at the same time. It's not a perfect solution, and my support for this referendum is wavering because of the slew of taxes our state is looking to pass in the next few months. However, in the end, I believe overall it would be a positive and would provide relief on property taxes, which we can all agree is needed. My second largest concern is class sizes. A few years ago, when a district was looking for ways to save money, attrition of staff was a viable option. Now we have class sizes at a level that concern me, and quite frankly, concern our staff as I talk with them. I'm afraid we don't, if we don't get our class sizes in our control, we'll undermine the very quality education that we dearly love. Thirdly, our curriculum resources. Our books and curriculum are dated, in some cases, they're in bad physical shape. Money has to be made available to purchase curriculum for new standards and teaching methods. Now I'll discuss our positives, starting with the faculty and staff. We have the hardest-working, most loving, caring, and professional faculty and staff of any school district, hands down. There are obviously, this obviously speaks to the leadership that our principals and Ms. Ruby are providing as well. Because of their commitment to excellence and their daily engagement, we have one of the best school districts in the state. Also, community and volunteers. I've had a chance to meet some wonderful people as I've been out campaigning, visiting our schools, and social media. A lot of great ideas and a lot of passion, ensuring our elected officials are doing their jobs. Every day, our schools are filled with helpful parents who are giving other time to educate our children. We wouldn't be as organized or efficient without them, so I say thank you to the volunteers tonight. Now lastly, I want to provide some possible changes I'll be pushing and supporting. With my professional experience in electric usage and technologies, I'll be looking at ways to incorporate efficiencies into our district. As I visit our facilities, it seems we have a real opportunity to save dollars on energy costs. Improvement in technology has come a long way since our facilities were built, and we need to capitalize on these opportunities. The second opportunity is school consolidation. As I visit others in the community, the question comes up very often about consolidation. Right now, we are only assuming there are significant benefits financially in consolidation. No one has hard facts to back this claim. I am apprehensive to jump into this blindly, as I feel there's too much risk to our children's education. To be clear, I support consolidation efforts, but I would like a feasibility study to be performed so that we can expose any hidden risk to our district before proceeding. Lastly, is a class size reduction program. As I mentioned earlier, class sizes are a concern of mine. Unfortunately, I don't have an answer to this problem today, but I look forward to help solving it if I'm elected. Again, thank you to everyone listening and participating in tonight's event. I'm excited what our future holds for next four years and look forward to serving our community. Hopefully, I catch your vote tonight, but either way, I hope you make it to the polls to vote on April 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, District 90 candidates. Please bear with us momentarily while we allow the District 90 candidates to have a seat in the audience and bring the District 203 candidates forward. candidates. The candidates for School District 203 are Linda Cozad, incumbent, Stephen Dernbeck, incumbent, Keith Richter, incumbent, Brett Shute, incumbent, Laura Jacoby Van Hook. Mr. Richter was unable to attend tonight's forum. We will now offer the candidates three to five minutes to make candidate statements. The order in which the candidates will present was determined earlier by a random draw. Mr. Shute, you're first. You have three to five minutes.
So I was thinking about what I was going to say tonight, and man, I'll tell you what, I'm not a politician at all. I'm, I'm seeking reelection to continue to stay on this board because I'm passionate about education. Like John, I, I definitely have a vested interest. My son is a junior at the, at the school as well, and I want to keep the, I want to keep O'Fallon one of the best schools in Metro East, and I personally believe in giving back to the community. So, a little bit about me. I have my master's degree in communications from Eastern Illinois University. I've been employed for over 10 years with the American Cancer Society as the senior market manager, and so I'm used to doing a lot with limited funds. So I actually quite, or I, I volunteer quite a bit as well. I'm the community service chair for the Sunrise Rotary of O'Fallon. I also volunteer with the Violence Prevention Center, Fontana-Bell Maternity Home, and the O'Fallon Food Pantry, volunteered for the O'Fallon Child Health and Wellness Committee, and then I've also volunteered for Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Special Olympics, and I'm a former volunteer firefighter for the Cornbelt Fire Protection District. So as you can see, I personally believe in giving back to the community. So, the big question is, why should you guys vote for Brett Shute? And really, I'm running on three pillars, and it's, I think it's, you've, you've heard this quite a bit, but it's continue the high academic standards, school safety, and financial responsibility. So first, I'm going to touch on high academic standards. We have a meeting called Conversations Over Coffee where the community can come, ask the men, the administration, as well as ask, ask the school board members any questions that they may have. And usually, when, when we're done talking, we always talk to the, to the parents, and we say, you know, how, how is your daughter? How is your son if they're in college? And, and most of the times, they say, you know, my, my son or daughter is levels ahead of everyone else in their college class, and it's because of the education at OTHS. So we need to keep pushing to make sure our students have the best and are the best that they can be. And in fact, you can read my fact sheet regarding my vote on the advanced placement and my work on the Achievement Gap Committee to do that. The next is school safety. So I grew up in a small town, 4,500 people. And when, once we graduated from Eastern Illinois University, I was worried about which community I'd bring my family to, and I actually walked in the Fairview Heights Mall, and I just started asking people who had good school districts, and they mentioned O'Fallon. And so that's, that's why we chose to move to O'Fallon. Money has been tight for the school districts. I think everyone knows that. But again, just look at my fact sheet. School safety is very important to me. In this past year, we had to make a decision regarding our school off, uh, resource officer. I wanted to keep that school resource officer. In the end, it was decided that we were, we were not going to move forward with the school resource officer, but then from the great work of Dr. Benway and the, and the city of O'Fallon, we were actually able to reinstate that position a few months later. So simply put, if we don't have safe schools, enrollment will drop, which will also quit, or which will also cause people to quit moving to O'Fallon. And then the last one is financial responsibility. Like I said, money has been tight. You, again, look on that sheet, and you can see where I stand with finances, but there has to be a balance. Here's how I look at it. I, when I'm on the board, I actually picture the community sitting at a table with me and pushing dollars my way and saying, I worked very hard for this money. Please be good steward of it when you're making decisions about the school board, or, or about the school. However, we still need to provide a top-notch education for our students. That's why, you know, there has to be a balance. If we raise taxes, people can move. People might not relocate here. However, if something doesn't give, our district reserves would be dried up by 2021. So I'll be, I'll be, after the meeting, you can ask me any questions you'd like to be about OTHS. But, you know, when I, when I'm talking to the individuals here in this room, as well as the people watching on TV, when you're at the poll, please remember two things. One, you need to select board members who will cast their vote thinking about every citizen of O'Fallon, not a certain group or their own personal feelings. When I cast my, when I cast a vote, I always think to myself, if I polled every resident in O'Fallon, how would they have me vote? And so that's how I make my votes. Second, I love O'Fallon with all my heart, and I'm hoping that you'll elect Brett Shute at this election. With that said, please elect candidates who have a strong knowledge of state funding and long-range forecasting. I have this experience. I am that candidate, and I'd appreciate your vote.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Dernbeck, you're next.
I'd like to thank the Chamber, the Weekly, and the Progress for hosting this event tonight. Good evening. My name is Steve Dernbeck. I live at 1251 Rutherford Ridge on the north side of O'Fallon with my wife Kay. We've lived there the past 14 years. I'm a 1975 graduate of Quincy University with a bachelor's degree in mathematics. I taught math at Althoff Catholic High School my first year out of college, then spent the next 11 years at Signal Hill School in West Belleville teaching middle school math. Two District 90 principals are former students of mine. I was hired at OTHS in 1987 as a math teacher, as a head volleyball coach, and as an assistant basketball coach. I earned my master's degree in education administration from SIU Edwardsville in the spring of 2000. That same year, I became an assistant principal at OTHS. Four years later, I was named the principal, a position I held, until I retired in 2009 after 34 years as an educator. My wife Kay taught second grade at Bell Valley School in Belleville for 34 years. I'm proud to say that my daughter Kristen is a teacher at Wood River High School, although she teaches English, not math, like her dad. In 2013, I was elected to the Board of Education at OTHS, and I am running for reelection. It is a tribute to the dedicated teachers and the administration at OTHS that I believe we remain the top high school south of Interstate 80 in the entire state. That's not been easy to do, given the state's uncertain finances, as we are all aware. My top priority will continue to be to do what is best for the success of each of our students. That'll be a challenge as long as the state of Illinois' finances remain uncertain. However, OTHS must live within our means. We must be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. We cannot continue to spend more than we receive each year. As a board member, I will continue to recommend that we do all we can to keep excellence at OTHS. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Van Hook, you're next.
Thank you for this opportunity this evening. First and foremost, I want you to know that I'm a mother to four wonderful grown children. All of our children embrace the importance of a strong education. Three of our children graduated from OTHS. In fact, three of our four children have chosen a career in education. Currently, I serve as an assistant adjunct professor at Lenderwood University in the Education Department. My educational experiences have resulted to my recent appointment to the Illinois State Board of Education School Consular Committee, Committee for the Illinois Licensor Testing System. I also volunteer for hospice. I've been blessed with a rich experience in education, as I began my career as a sixth-grade teacher, and I eventually went on to teach third and fourth grade. Later on, at that same school, I became a school counselor and a grant writer. But the very heart of my educational experience was centered around my time at OTHS. I was there for 20 years, and during that time, I was blessed to work for Mr. Grimmer and Rich Bickel. Because of this position, I, I became the, the Director of Guidance, excuse me. Because of this position, it gave me a very unique perspective to not only meet students every day, but I also met with parents on a daily basis. I got to hear their needs and their desires. It was a very, very good experience. I was part of that team that created excellence in education for every student every day, and it's my belief that we need to pay that forward. I also believe that an effective board member represents all people and has a genuine talent for communication, and that's who I am. I want to bring this aptitude to the OTHS Board of Education and work together. We need to be responsive and receptive to the community at large, reassuring open dialogue, not just when there is a potential major cut. By building these relationships, we encourage, we encourage positive energy. We have very tough decisions ahead, so we need to encourage the community to be a part of the process. In doing so, they will understand the pathway to our decisions. O'Fallon is very unique, and we are so incredibly lucky because we have leading military families and so many professionals that live among us. We need to engage and welcome ideas. Like the mission statement says, accessing the talents of the community, the family and staff to provide a positive environment that maximizes the potential of students to become informed decision-makers, engaged learners, and responsible citizens in an ever-changing and diverse society. These board members have dedicated a lot. There's no doubt about it. It's a thankless job. There's no nominal pay. They get nothing. They just completely give of their time. I'm willing to do that as well. I believe that I have a special skill set that can, that I can bring to this board and give a very different perspective. Unfortunately, we're faced with the demand of doing more with less, like everybody has said. As a taxpayer, I understand the importance of managing the district's finances. As a taxpayer, I understand the importance of managing the district's finances. My experiences and strong understanding of the educational needs of our students provides me with an opportunity to plan the impact of our budgetary discussions and decisions. I've been there. I've seen it, 360. I bring that unique perspective of clarity to the ripple-down effect. I don't pretend to have all the answers. No one does, no one in this room. If they did, I wouldn't be the only one challenging all the incumbents. To sum it up, the future success in maintaining excellence in education starts with respect and communication, and most importantly, our decisions should always be predicated on how they will impact our students. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. And Ms. Cozad.
It bears repeating that the mission of OTHS is to access the talents of the community, family, and staff to provide a positive environment that maximizes the potential of students to become informed decision-makers, engaged lifelong learners, and responsible citizens in an ever-changing and diverse society. However, the responsibility of turning a mission statement into reality actually begins with the governance of seven non-paid volunteers that are serving as elected school board members, that are tasked with adopting, enforcing, and monitoring the policies necessary to lead the management of the district. My name is Linda Cozad, and I am seeking reelection for O'Fallon Township High School, District 203 Board of Education. It's been an honor to be on the board since 2004, and during my tenure, the district has certainly faced some of the biggest challenges ever, most of it out of our control. We faced a dramatic reduction in EAV growth, which equated to decreases in revenue. The district has faced increased demands from the state of Illinois, yet once again, decreased funding. The district has seen a change in our demographics, to include a doubling of the number of students on free and reduced lunch, and an increase in our special education population. Most recently, the district has had to deal with the loss of over a million dollars due to the Disabled Veterans Property Tax Benefit. But yet, while on this board, we have successfully implemented strategies to allow us to maximize the investment of our resources into our students. They've included deficit reductions of $4.5 million, collaboration with the union on two-year salary freeze and reduction of benefits, refinancing of bonds, withdrawing from the special education co-op. In spite of these challenges, OTHS remains one of the highest-performing high school districts, ranking in the top 7% in Illinois in respect to student achievement, yet we are in the bottom 3% in cost per student to achieve that success. But there are continued challenges ahead for OTHS. I want to continue to serve as a board member, to develop strategies for facing these obstacles while ensuring that every student has the opportunity to achieve academic success. As a board member, we've implemented several initiatives to improve our communication with our stakeholders, which include OTHS teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community members. We started Conversation Over Coffee, which is a casual gathering inviting community members to come and meet with board and administration, to ask questions and share ideas. Several new policies and initiatives have resulted from these meetings. We established new board committees that included representatives from the stakeholder groups to address key issues, including student discipline and closing the student achievement gap. If elected, I will propose expanding the Finance Committee to include feedback from work teams formed to specifically offer input on the financial future of our district and strategies for the use of the financial reserves. I will also encourage the development of additional resources in an easy-to-understand format for the community to have better insight into the issues that we face. District 203 has worked with representatives in our state capital. I will work to ensure that we will take a leadership role in influencing legislation that impacts education. Though we will find a means to succeed in spite of lawmakers, OTHS must work to share ideas and strategies for fair consideration of all students. I would like to thank the O'Fallon Shiloh Chamber of Commerce, the O'Fallon Weekly, and the O'Fallon Progress for hosting this evening. Tonight, I'm asking you to vote for Linda Cozad on April 4th for OTHS 203 Board of Education. I bring a proven track record, serving in a board member role of preserving the educational excellence offered at OTHS while functioning under ever-challenging financial restraints. I do believe that the greatest resource in our township is its children, and I will continue to work to ensure that there is an opportunity for academic success for every student. Thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Thank you. And thank you, District 203 candidates. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our candidates' forum for this evening. Please stay and take the time to meet with the candidates who are here with us tonight. All of us involved hope we have served our purpose in providing an educational platform for the voters of the O'Fallon community. I wish to thank all of our candidates for their participation tonight. I wish to thank our audience and our viewers. I encourage all of you to take advantage of the privilege that representative government affords us by going to the polls in April. Please vote.